To the December 12th meeting of the Hampton School Board, I'll ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Public comment on agenda items. Is there any public comment on agenda items? State your name and where you live.
Neil Raven, Barron Road. Members of the Board, allow me to read a short, very short excerpt from a speech given years ago by someone I'm betting you'll know, you'll recognize, and I'm sure you'll see the relevance in a moment. It goes like this. Because I am a Catholic, and no Catholic has ever been elected president, the real issues in this campaign have been obscured, so it is apparently necessary for me to state once again, not what kind of a church I believe in, for that should be important only to me, but what kind of America I believe in. I believe in an America where the separation of church and state is absolute, where no church or church school is granted any public funds. Today I may be the victim, but tomorrow it may be you, until the whole fabric of our harmonious society is ripped. I hardly need to tell you, of course, that was John Fitzgerald Kennedy. And what did he mean by the ripping of the fabric of our harmonious community? Well, we have evidence for that right here in Hampton. There's public record about the abuse women in town endured after they signed a petition for separation of church and state. Adult men driving in automobiles shouting profanities while children played in their front yards in Hampton. Hampton citizens who supported separation of church and state have been called, quote, "anti-Catholic" and "God-hating" online. What does that make John F. Kennedy? Do we need more evidence that this warrant article, which you're going to consider, has already ripped at the harmonious fabric of our town? What does a recommendation for this article from the school board even mean? The last meeting, the chairperson of the school board said that while she would vote to recommend the warrant article giving public funds to a church school, citizens should disregard her recommendation and, quote, "do their own research and decide for themselves, regardless of the recommendation." I sat here thinking, well, if you want the citizens to disregard the recommendation, why bother making it in the first place? You say, "We recommend, but never mind." I understand the school board has no power to keep the article off the ballot, as was said, but we all know what that box at the bottom of the ballot means. We all know how powerful an influencer, a school board recommendation for an article is. To deny that is disingenuous at the least. The chairperson of the school board said she would vote to recommend a warrant article supporting public funds for this church school because she supported every Hampton child. Of course, she did not mention that 75% of the students at Sacred Heart are not even from Hampton. We all care about that other 25%. I care about the other 25%. I care about all Hampton children, but that does not mean that I want to pay for their first communion dresses, or for that matter, for their bar mitzvahs. That is the role of their parents.
You have to wrap it up, sir. You've had your three minutes.
The fact is that some people on the board have tried very hard to deny this warrant articles about separation of church and state, that it's only a magnanimous effort to support children of Hampton. I don't doubt for a minute that you have the best interests of Hampton children at heart. We all have that interest. What we're arguing about is what is the best way to express it? Oh, and one last thing. 30 seconds, maybe 10. If members of the board or members of their family are parishioners of Our Lady of the Miraculous Metal Church, I would hope you would abstain lest anyone say, or it be thought, that people in a public office are directing public funds toward a personal church. Thank you.
As is official law by the state of New Hampshire, anytime 25 voters submit a warrant article, 25 registered and legal voters of New Hampshire is presented to the school board or board of selectmen, that warrant article has to be on the ballot. The questions for arguments about the warrant article really belong on the public hearings that will be held during the budget process. I urge you to come to those. I urge you to state your feelings, and you will be counted on versus one versus the other, and that's fine. I'm hoping that the community doesn't do what they did last time, but we don't have -- this type of article permits a lot of people and brings up a lot of emotions. So it will be going on the ballot. We vote tonight whether we recommend or not recommend, and then it moves to the Budget Committee. They will vote to recommend or not recommend, and then it goes on the ballot. All right. And for your information, sir, I'm a member of Trinity Episcopal Church, so I am not a member of the Miraculous Metal. Any other questions or comments? We should see if there's anybody else.
Chris Munns from Five Nersesian Way. Just a quick follow-up to the point that you've made, Madam Chairman. You are going to be voting -- it sounds like you are going to be voting on whether to recommend, you know, warrant articles to the public.
As you know, Chris, that's our job and our obligation.
And I appreciate that. That's --
RSA 35.
32, five.
No, I'm not.
I don't think he's arguing it.
And I'm not arguing. I'm just making for everyone so they know that we are obligated by state law.
And I'm not arguing that. And I'm also -- I also understand that the voters of Hampton will ultimately decide whether the article passes or does not pass. But the point that I'd like to make here tonight is that many of those voters are going to look to you, the school board, for guidance on what you recommend the vote should be. And I would not underestimate the importance of the vote you cast. After you were elected to your positions on the school board, you took an oath to bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire and support the constitutions thereof. The New Hampshire constitution is very clear that funding of religious schools is not prohibited under the constitution. And it's so clear that, in fact, supporters of increased public funding of religious schools this year introduced an amendment to the New Hampshire constitution that would specifically have removed the language in the current constitution that prohibits those contributions being made to religious schools. And I would ask you, why would they do that if that was not a concern, a constitutional concern? To me, it's clear that no public funds can be given to any religious institution or school supported by a religious institution. It's a basic question of separation of church and state, and I believe that you owe it to the voters of Hampton to show that you recognize that, and I urge you not to recommend this article for passage.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to call Mary Borg up to give her report.
Wait, we have to finish public comment.
That is the end of public comment.
No, wait, there is no time. We have to take all comments.
Okay, I didn't know there was another one.
Yes.
McCarthy, 3 Heritage Drive, and I -- whoop, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Mary McCarthy, 3 Heritage Drive. I don't support the Sacred Heart warrant article for much of the same reasons that Chris and Neil just shared. My question is, if Berwick Academy was to come tonight or next year with a warrant article phrased exactly as the Sacred Heart article is phrased, with obviously a different amount, representative of the number of kids that were at Berwick, would the board -- and if you could each answer.
We're not going to answer individual questions, I can tell you that. If Berwick Academy gets 25 registered voters, they will go on the ballot in Hampton.
Well, no, that's not my question, though. I'm not asking if it would go.
You're not going to get the answer or recommending.
Well, no, my -- well, if I could just make my point, though. My point is not that whether it would go on the ballot. I totally understand that. I'm saying, would the board recommend it like you have in the past recommended Sacred Heart?
We don't know that. We've never been presented with that petition, but we thank you for your comments and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other people that want to speak, citizens that want to speak on anything? No other public comment? Mary Borg.
On the agenda. So last month, we were talking about participation, kids, students, how are we going to get them? So my staff has been brainstorming and talking to our students, our customers, and one suggestion that came up, I think an important one, is our vegetarian customers here at Hampton Academy, and they want more choices, they want to see more choices. So that's the sample I gave you tonight. It's a protein-based sun butter yogurt mix, and I got to tell you, our head cook, Natalie Strauss, from Hampton Academy, took all the ingredients home Sunday and did a measure and this and that, and mixed and wrote down, and she got all the recipes and made them perfect. So kudos to her, and I hope our kids enjoy them, and we're going to start serving that next week as a grab-and-go with some vegetables, fruit, you know, pita chips in a grab-and-go container. So that was one of the things we're coming up with. Second, I am going to meet with Student Council here on January 5th at 2:30, and we're going to talk to them, you know, what do they want to see? You know, they're our customers. What do they want to see us have? What don't they like? More suggestions, open to anything, I'm just so -- and then I also put on the menu in December, I don't know if you ever see my menu, but on the menu it says, "Parents, kids, any suggestions, you know, within reason, please email me," and I did get three responses, which I was thrilled about that. So I got three responses and a few suggestions that I'm going to put on the menu, also I'm going to menu. Technology, we're going to talk to Amber and her crew, maybe do a little bit of survey at Hampton Academy again. What would you like? What don't you like? What can I add? What can you see? So I'm trying to reach our customers because they are our customers, so. Grants, searching for, maybe there's some grants out there that can help us. So I'm looking into whatever grants that we may be able to apply and participate in. That's about it. I know I gave Mariah some numbers that you had asked for. So those numbers, I don't know if I assume you have them?
Yep.
Okay. So any other questions? I mean, we're trying to break even in food. It's a challenge. Food costs are up, gas prices are up, plastic is up, chemicals are up, and it's hard. Three buildings, you know, three buildings of chemicals in each dishwasher, three employees at each building. It's a challenge.
I'd just like to say thank you for making the effort to do the vegetarian, to grant and everything you're doing.
I mean, I --
You do the best you can, Mary, and then that's all you can do.
I get excited when the kids eat. I get excited when they have Brussels sprouts, you know, I get excited. So I want them to eat. I want to feed everybody, so.
They eat Brussels sprouts. That's awesome.
They eat -- we do some Brussels sprouts here, so I am trying, but, you know, I will keep you.
Mary, your figures show you have $7,000 in uncollected food.
Yes.
Lunches and breakfasts.
Yes, you got that right there.
Okay. What do you -- do you have any accounting, you know, any idea of why that is or how that is?
Is it, do we know if it's higher than usual or if this is about normal this time of year?
It feels higher. I would have to go back and check, but from my last 10 years in my head, this is higher. This is the most high it's ever been at this time of year. I know Christmas and Thanksgiving usually gets a little slacky, but, you know, 4,000 range. We're at seven. I don't know why. I've called parents, they're -- I'll bring in a check tomorrow. I'll pay, I promise. Can we help in any way? I tell them we have a scholarship, and there's been one or two that have reached out for the scholarship, and that's the money that was donated from the people last year. I have it in a separate little scholarship account. You know, I'm calling, I'm emailing, I'm texting, I'm snail mail home, you know, to the parents. I'm trying.
Yeah.
I mean, we -- my next thing is to maybe not give out some seconds, maybe no second slice of pizza. I don't know what you want, what I should do about that. Maybe no snacks, maybe an apple instead of a bag snack if you owe that much money. I would never, you know.
Have you cross-referenced this with the applications for free and reduced?
Yes. All my applications from last year have, those people have filled out an application.
Okay.
So a few parents that I thought would maybe, I just mailed it home discreetly or emailed it, but I haven't heard back.
Haven't heard.
So trying there.
Mary, one thing I notice is that if you compare September, that had 19 days, with November, that had 18.
Yes.
You can see a substantial increase, which is really nice to see overall. I mean, if you look at the breakfast numbers at Center and Marsden, they went down, but every other area, breakfast and lunch went up, and overall, breakfast and lunch went up significantly.
Right.
So, yeah, so that's, I think, you know, that's --
We're getting there.
Yeah, so that's encouraging, I would just say. And we had, by the way, one fewer day in November.
Right, and then we --
That's encouraging.
I think we had, you know, October, we lost our sixth grade, not lost them, they went on camp for a week, so there's factors there, but overall, we're a little engine that could.
You got it.
Just a quick note, not so much to Mary, but to the rest of the school board, which is the New Hampshire School Board Association, is running a Zoom webinar in January called Addressing Food Access in New Hampshire Schools and Communities. We've talked a lot about our thoughts about the food budget and how it's going, and Mary's working on it, but this is a chance for us to maybe get a little more experience and information on what Mary's working on and Mariah.
Wendy, is that Wendy?
It's January 11th, so you should be getting emails from the School Board Association. They'll send you a list of all the webinars coming up in the next couple of months. I just happened to notice that one, so.
From 12 to 1.
Yep.
12 to 1. It's a Zoom meeting.
Got it.
Could be.
Got it.
Any questions for Mary?
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And at this time, I would invite State Representative Peggy Balboni to talk to us about the school funding issue.
Candace O'Neil, Penniman Lane in Hampton. I'm just stepping up quickly to introduce my colleague Peggy Balboni, who sits on the Education Committee up in Concord and is here to talk to us about the complicated school funding in New Hampshire that a lot of us don't understand, myself included.
Hi, I'm Peggy Balboni, and I'm actually the representative for your neighboring district. I represent Rye, Northampton, and Greenland, but because I'm on the House Education Committee, we all work together, we're all in different committees, so I'm bringing this idea to you as well as to our home district and SAU 50. So I don't know how aware people are of the new, of the court cases that have come down recently that are going to affect every school district's funding mechanism, and we don't know what it's going to be yet, but what we do know is that we, as legislators, are going to be, have to do something about it. I think that probably, and I don't know when, because I think the rulings will be appealed, but I do know that starting next session, we're going to be looking at it. There is a group that does a wonderful presentation about adequacy and funding, and for those of us that are involved in it, and people like me who kind of try to understand it, it's very, very complicated. In fact, that's where I was today in Concord and going to another presentation on adequacy and the changes that are coming down with the formula that were voted in last year. So this group is called, I believe you have a letter in your packet, so I don't want to repeat everything.
Page 41, your packet.
So there's an organization called the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project, and they've been doing presentations across the state that basically look at both the adequacy and the statewide educational property tax and how they interact. And they do a very good job about explaining how it works across the state, and they also do a little bit to every community they visit that would be specific to your community as well. It's a presentation, it takes about an hour, there's time for questions and answers at the end. They basically, they've gone to other SAUs around the state, and I do have a list with those, if you're interested. And basically, who is it for? It's for the general public. It's very helpful. I was on the Rye School Board for nine years, and I really didn't understand the adequacy formula, and I wish that this had been something that was available to me when I was on the board. School board members, your select board, anybody who's involved with education and the money taxes that is being raised for it. And I know that because the court cases have generated a lot of media attention, that parents would be very interested in this as well. So basically, what they're looking for, or what I'm asking you, is if you would allow me and Chris and Candace and Mike and all the other representatives to work with Dr. Costa to see if we could set up a presentation in February or March utilizing one of your buildings and invite them to come, invite the public, and maybe if you would consider also allowing the communities in SAU 21 to extend an invitation to them as well. I honestly don't know how popular these presentations are. I went to one a while ago in Dover, and I think that some of my colleagues have been to different ones. So basically, we publicize that it's going to occur, they have minimal requirements, like, you know, projection equipment and things like that, but it can all be through Dr. Costa. So I guess what I'm asking for at some point, when you take a vote or whatever, and if you're interested, just let Dr. Costa know, and she can get back to me, and I'll work with your local representatives as well to get it going. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions?
I have one. The New Hampshire lottery system, wasn't that money earmarked for education, or was it conveniently misappropriated by the state?
That's a complicated question. All of the education is funded through the Education Trust Fund, and I can, I got it probably over there, and I could break it down to what it is. Some of those monies are included in the Education Trust Fund, but the vast majority, 30%, comes from your statewide property tax swept. But there's business enterprise tax, there's another business tax, and I'm sorry, I don't have it with me, in front of me, but there's a whole lot of money that's in there that's designated, and that's just a small piece of it, so.
So that money, and doesn't the state usually have a somewhat of a surplus, and that doesn't go to education as well?
Again, there's a formula that says how much money goes into the Education Trust Fund, and if that money is surplus, it stays in there for the next year, or if it's depleted, it goes out of the general fund. So it's a little fuzzy on there. Again, I could, if I had it in front of me, I could probably explain it to you better, but I literally came from a pine-arsed presentation today in Concord, my head's swimming a little bit, because there's two things at play. What's the revenue sources are, and then, you know, and then the adequacy formula and how they interact. And that is a good reason to have this presentation.
Yes, it sounds like if we have the presentation, they're going to answer those questions.
But I remember at one point when we were a donor town.
We don't get adequacy.
Okay, now I understand we may be going back to that, okay, that some towns took the funds and put it into their general fund, and it was an earmark for schools. And I'm looking at the towns in the upper echelon of the state, like Berlin, and all those towns. So when you put something together like that, and it's not going to the purpose that it was earmarked for, and going to offset property taxes in those towns that are, let's say, not at a level that they should be, I don't understand why we have to become a donor town.
There is no solution right now in terms of what's coming. I understand you're referencing the original suit that came down about that it wasn't constitutional the way that we found.
And when we became a donor town, some of those towns earmarked that money to their general fund and not to education.
So I can't speak to what happened then. I think that this presentation has a little bit of that history, and it will go down through the various court cases that have settled up into this point and bring us to where we are now.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and go forward with setting up this presentation at the convenience of all the parties.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of putting together? It's unanimous, so. All right.
Is it possible to put this on our website as well, or would that be in conflict with the presentation? To put this particular --
Letter?
No, the website for the newhamshirebr.com.
I don't see why we couldn't. Yeah, we should be able to put the links up.
Okay, I would put the links on our website.
We could, Amber, we could put the links up and say that we're working on a program, right?
Right, in preparation for the presentation. Maybe that will get people, generate more interest.
Thank you for your vote, and I look forward to working with Dr. Costa, and again, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you too. Thanks, Peggy. Happy holidays. Appreciate it. Anything that will be at the budget meeting next Tuesday night at 7? 6. At 6, at Town Hall to present the Hampton School Board budget as well as our warrant Anything on buildings? Anything on CIP?
Nope.
Nope. Anything on curriculum?
I just know that all the staffs continue to work with demonstrated success on the scope and sequence and curriculum maps, and also, you know, the alignment and refinement of all the common assessments. I know all three schools continue to work with them. I believe there is a meeting coming up this Thursday?
The third Thursday of the month at 3:15 at the Community Room. We will be talking specifically about math.
Right.
And it'll be the third Thursday of the month, and we alternate between math and language arts. So this month it's math, and next month --
Just looking for the date.
Oh, yep, sorry. It would be --
Not this Thursday, it's next Thursday.
It's December the 21st.
21st, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
New Hampshire School Board, last.
Well, as Wendy said, there are a bunch of --
Zoom calls, webinars?
Webinars, that's the word I was looking for, coming up. And the only other thing is, I don't know if we as a board want to nominate ourselves for School Board of the Year.
There we go.
Or not, but we only have about a week to do it, so I'm guessing no.
Yeah, I would probably say that's a --
That's all I have.
Don't sell yourself short.
Can we do it?
Sure. Whatever you'd like to do is right to do it.
Is it really? I'm going to check that out.
Okay. Policy, we haven't had a meeting, we are just having a meeting in January.
January.
I would like to have one in December if we could. There are a few policies I want to --
There are a few policies I want to update based on some legislation that's coming down the pike. So if we could look at a couple of them, we can do that Thursday at five o'clock, I think we said, because of timing. We won't need long, but if we just designate an hour to look at a couple.
We'll have to talk scheduling after, because I can't do that.
Okay, all right, let's talk.
Okay. Professional development? PTA and recreation?
Um, I mean, they all, they, there isn't a whole, whole lot going on with the PTA. They did just finish up their orders on all the spirit gear, which was fantastic, and they gave away lots of free T-shirts. One nice thing is if your kids have outgrown their spirit gear, please feel free to bring those into the school nurses, and they do hold on to that if kids need clothes at school, things like that. It's a great, it's a great way to sort of recycle that stuff that your kids have outgrown but is still in good condition. The PTA is desperately in need of volunteers. They are running very low on hands to help with their big events and their little events. They're going to need lots of officers next year. It is work, but it is a lot of fun, and we all know it's a really great thing, it's a lot of great things that we do for our students and for our teachers and administration and faculty. So if you have any interest, definitely get in touch with Jim McClellan, Wendy Lewis, any of those guys, and they would be happy to have you. REC has lots going on, you're just going to want to check their website, they've got lots of after-school activities for the elementary school kids going on, so just check in with them. And C, they definitely have some stuff going on over Christmas break. I think they've got a three-day camp going on.
Safety? Anything on safety? Anything on scheduling?
Nothing on scheduling, they're staring.
Okay. And wellness? Now we'll welcome the report from Center School.
Good evening. Hard to believe it's already December, and the first trimester is already over, so that ended December first, the grades closed. The report cards went live yesterday at four o'clock, so parents receive those by email. We participated in the Hampton Christmas Parade, that was a pure joy, and we had our first-grade concert, which was an absolute success. We just want to shout out to Mrs. Mallett and the Integrated Arts Teachers, as well as the first-grade teachers for all their effort and support, both on that night and during the practices. We have an early release on December twenty-second, that'll be a noon release, and then we return to school on January second. Do you guys have any questions?
I have one quick question. Can you tell me, and if you can't, don't worry about it, because I'm putting you on the spot. But what's the, you're transitioning from the Lucy Calkin Reading-Writing Program to the Science of Reading. What is the philosophy of that that you're switching to? What's the difference?
It's more of a structured literacy approach that really breaks down reading into, I'm not the expert on this, but into phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, breaks it down into skills that they can easily assess across children and then provide targeted instruction in those areas.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Does that make sense? Anybody else?
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
So I think the, I don't know if you're following the state, but the state has really encouraged the science of reading, and so, I think this came up last year at our board meetings, but we in Hampton have always felt that a balanced literacy approach was the best approach to teaching reading and writing for our students. So in that balanced literacy approach, particularly at a pre-K grade-two school, we've focused on, through foundations, on the phonics and the systemic approach to reading, as many of our students need that through either Wilson or Lips or Lyndon Mood Bell, where they need that to unlock the code of reading. And so what the state has done is they've elevated these approaches to ensure that schools are continuing to think about this. We've also looked at it as a district level, where I know that at Marston School, they're looking at this, particularly at third grade, which is kind of that transitional year where we go from learning to read to reading to learn. And of course, at the middle school, as an alternative way of teaching reading, I know that Dr. DeSilva-Napton has arranged for case managers to have some training in the science of reading, so that any struggling student in the area of reading and literacy will have that option as in their tool bag. So just to kind of build on that a little bit.
So for instance, Lucy Calkins, because that's been going on for a long time. We've done a lot of reading, and I mean, a lot of training and whatever. That, like, foundations isn't in Lucy Calkins?
No. Lucy Calkins is more reading and writing workshop and more thematics. But again, if you think about some of her strategies as it relates to balanced literacy, we still have many pieces of that that we're still implementing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good. Does that? Yeah, no doubt.
Jamie, do you think that?
Thanks for your help.
Did that cover it a little bit?
Yes.
And Principals, would you get up to speak, or Dr. DeSilva-Napton, if you want to elaborate? Because it's a great question to ask.
And over ninety percent of Center School staff has also participated in the Letters Training given out by the Department of Education, which specifically targets that area as well.
Training is it Letters?
Letters, L-E-T-R-S.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Can I have a motion to accept sixteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars for Center School?
Can we make a motion to accept all three checks? Can we do that all at once?
Yeah, that's what, that's the sixteen eighty-eight.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yep, it's for Haniford for two seventy, Hampton PTA, which is another reason to join Hampton PTA, five hundred dollars for the library, and nine hundred and eighteen dollars from the Get Kids Studios and Yearbook Publishing.
I'll make a motion to accept that amount.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor? Marston Schools' report. Sure.
Later on the agenda, but first we'll do my report, and then we'll get our presentation. So just a couple of things coming up. I believe Mrs. Hayward said it for Center School, but report cards were issued yesterday, so if you have any trouble with that, reach out to the school, and we can connect you with Tim Smith, he's phenomenal. A couple of things coming up in the future. On Monday, December eighteenth, we're going to have our fifth-grade original performance here at Hampton Academy at six PM. Our fifth-grade students co-write it with Mr. Carlson and the Integrated Arts Staff, and the fifth-grade teachers all take a pretty big part in this. It's a great undertaking, but if you've ever been, it's always a unique experience, so we invite you to come if you'd like. And some exciting news, tomorrow we'll have New Hampshire Chronicle at our school. You may have read, I think it was a month or so ago, about our fourth-grader, Lilia James, and her Them Apples business. Chronicle decided to pick up the story and wanted to do a small feature on her, so they're going to come by the school tomorrow and do an interview with her and her teacher and get a little footage, and it'll, then they're going to let us know sometime in January when it air, and we'll let you know, and the school community know, so people can view it on their leisure if they'd like. So just exciting things for our students and another great way to showcase the good things going on in Hampton. So other than that, I'll take questions about my report.
Any questions? Can I have a motion to accept two hundred and sixty-four dollars from Haniford for Marston School?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, but I do have a question.
Okay. All those in favor?
Okay.
Okay, and now your question?
Well, the question was on--
Oh, was that on the--
It's all right, it's okay. You get money from Gesskus also, right?
Yes.
You just haven't, they just haven't sent it to you?
We got it probably after, and our administrative assistant has been out, so it's locked up in a safe right now, and when she gets back, she'll process all that. Yeah, it's at our school, it's just we haven't processed it yet.
Okay.
And you guys got a, you got a PTA check, right? Didn't all--
Yes, but since Mrs. McCarthy's been out, they're sitting in a lockbox, and when she returns, she'll take care of them. All right, now we'll transition. So thank you for having us. I'm going to introduce our Phys Ed and Health teacher, Mrs. Cassie Cruz. She's here to talk about an amazing opportunity our students just participated in. UNH's Northeast Passage came down to our school all of last week for five full days. It was really an outstanding opportunity for our students to learn a little bit about assimilation, disabilities, tolerance, diversity, things like that. But I'm going to let Ms. Cruz talk a lot for a little bit, and then we have like a four-minute video for you with some students, and you'll get to see it in action, and then if you have questions afterwards, we'll happy to take them. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Cruz at this time.
Good evening, thank you for having me here tonight. So last week, our students at Marston had the opportunity to participate in the Northeast Passage similarity awareness program, and Northeast Passage spent the whole week at our school. Our students were able to learn about the Paralympics, about what Northeast Passage does for members in our community, and how everybody deserves opportunity to play. And while play might look a little different for people, there's more similarities than there are differences. Our students had the opportunity to actually try different activities using the wheelchairs in the gym during their PE classes. So it was a wonderful experience, and the video will show you how great of a time the kids all had doing this program.
We went around the basketball court in the wheelchairs, and we had to try to get each other with, tried to get wheelchairs or their body with a ball, but it's really hard because you have to try to move around.
We were doing in the gym, we were going on our wheelchairs, and we were playing fun games that we, that includes moving, using our bodies to move the wheelchairs and throwing the ball.
You can't like step out when you're throwing it, you have to like sit down, and it's all with your arms.
Taco tag, where it was fun because we got to move around in wheelchairs while also being competitive.
Two people start off at chimichangas, and then two, and then everyone else are the soft tacos. This, you did this if you were a soft taco, and if you were a chimichanga, you would go chimmy chimmy changa.
That would tell you if you were a soft taco or a chimichanga. There was two chimichangas, and then all the rest were soft tacos. They were throwing around a tomato or just a ball.
They teach us about different sports that you can play in wheelchairs, how different people with different disabilities actually do it, and they show us a perspective we wouldn't have gotten.
In Northeast Passage, I learned how to work well with a team, and I learned how to be cooperative. I thought it was going to kind of be like bumpy, and I thought it was going to be like regular wheelchairs, and like, but they're like, the wheels are like slanted kind of, and they're like made for it.
I learned that it's like it can be harder for other people out in the world, where it can just be harder for people.
Probably like not bumping into each other, because since it was like my first time being, just even being in a wheelchair, it was really hard, just like controlling it.
I feel like it's nice to learn about the people who are disabled or can't do something.
I learned that no matter what, like you, you have a disability, you can always do other things that people with no abilities can do.
It's important to learn about that, because there are also some people out there who have disabilities, and they can always do sports and different stuff, so we, they do stuff in wheelchairs.
I think that it's good because like they can like learn a lot about people that have disabilities.
I loved it, it was a really good chance to understand what other people go through, and at the same time, it was really fun.
I liked moving around in the wheelchairs and having fun with my friends.
Yeah, I would like to thank them for bringing all these wheelchairs in and just helping out people who are disabled to play sports.
I really want to thank them for coming in and teaching us all about it, because it was a really fun experience. I think every single class in the whole school enjoyed it a lot.
Northeast Passage was a fun learning opportunity. It gave me creativity and a glimpse into the life of someone that has to wheel in a wheelchair every single day.
Just, while we go to questions after, a big thank you to Mrs. Levine and also Nick Giaruso, he's the man behind the camera, and he puts together these awesome films for us. He did a wonderful one last year on our mentor group, and then again today, so just a big thank you to Nick. But Ms. Cruz and I will take any questions you have, and, you know, parents who are interested, we'll put this out on our website and our Facebook and all of those things, and share it in the school community so people can watch.
Do you make any baskets?
Luckily, I only had to play the game where we throw balls at each other, so it was perfect for me.
How did we get this program?
So they're a program out of the University of New Hampshire, and I actually, I went to UNH, so I learned about this program when I was a student there. And we had them here, what, about five years ago at Marston? So this is our second time having them here, but every time we've had them, our students have had a blast. They learn so much, they learn about the different challenges and how much practice it takes for all athletes, but these adaptive sports, and they also realize how much fun these sports are as well. So they had a blast doing this.
Great program.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to be a guest teacher when they were simulating being blind, and it was, it was really, it was excellent, it was really interesting. I could see students getting frustrated, but then another student was their partner and would talk them through it, and I think it was, yeah, it was very enlightening for those kids. It was, it was excellent, so.
Really great.
Thank you. Yeah, the week prior in PE, we played goal ball, which is a Paralympic sport. So the students wear eye shades, and the ball that they use has bells in it, so they can hear it, and it's a wonderful Paralympic sport if you ever have the opportunity to watch it. But we talk a lot about how, you know, we can't fully understand what it must be like to live a life where you can't see. However, it is, it is fun to still play the game and to try to play it, and these Paralympians, they train very hard every day to be at that top level.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one last one. Is this program going to be instituted yearly at Marston?
I hope so. I hope we can get them back once a year, I think that would be wonderful. So as long as we get the funding for it, I would, I would love that.
What does this program cost? Which is pretty reasonable.
They do sometimes one-day assemblies for forty-five minutes. Haniford helps, Box Tops are very generous PTA, helps to offset costs of things like this.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My son Jackson plays sled hockey with Northeast Passage? So this Sunday at ten to eleven at the Rinks, PA Rinks, they are doing a sled hockey family scrimmage. So if anybody wants to come check out sled hockey, Philip Sexton Academy from ten to eleven AM, they'll have all the guys on the team there, and they'll have extra sleds. So if anybody wants to hop in a sled, or children or students want to hop in a sled, that's a perfect opportunity, and I'll make sure Ms. Cruz gets all that information for you guys.
Thank you.
I would hope that the board recognizes the value of this program and looks at funding, it's only twenty-seven hundred, but I, I think, you know, we should look at that going forward. And I know we didn't put it in the budget, but if we can amend that, I would like to see that.
That would be, I think that's a great idea, Frank. Other questions or comments?
I was just going to say, it's kind of in the budget under--
Extracurricular.
Assemblies, it's kind of in it.
Yeah, it is.
But we should remember it when we do next year's budget, stuff like that.
Yeah, because that's really--
And also, we're seeing that the PTA actually is, because of their involvement with the Broke, is a little better funded than they have been over the last three years. So the schools are getting considerably more enrichment money than they used to in the past, which--
the past, which does really help offset the programs like this. So, we're not, I mean, you're right, and it's great. I don't know that we necessarily need to amend the budget to cover it. I think we are, at this point, there, there was lots of head, head nodding in the past, but I think for now, we're probably okay on funding for that kind of stuff. Yeah, yep. So, I got a thumbs up from Nate in the back.
It's another reason to join the PTA.
It is another reason to join the PTA.
Because they need volunteers when they do the Broke and do other fundraising activities, and it supports our kids 100%.
Yep.
Plus, anything else? Okay. Mr. Hawkins?
Good evening. One thing I'd like to add to my board report is, we had a wonderful band concert, our holiday band concert, last night. They called me up on stage, and I got to show my musical prowess, so luckily, it was only a set of sleigh bells, but it was a lot of fun. Great to see, I think we had 36 kids in the sixth grade, and if you know the, the size of that class, it's about, you know, somewhere around 90. So, you're talking about almost half of the kids are, are playing in the band, so, and post-COVID, it was really difficult to get that, that program built back up, and Ms. Gay did a wonderful job. I can't speak enough for the, the time that she and Ms. Reno put into the, the music programs and the, the wonderful shows that they put on. Tomorrow night, Ms. Reno will be with the, the choral, she'll be having the choral concert at 7:00 p.m., so if you have free time, please swing by. But it's, it's just wonderful to see the kids come out and perform and show what they've been practicing. We had a wonderful parade. It was wonderful that it didn't rain this year, and it wasn't super windy or anything. Great turnout within the community and had a lot of fun with the kids. Let's see, we're up to about 93 kids for our Washington DC trip. We have some money coming in. It wasn't in this board report. It'll be in the next one, because it came in after I sent it in, but we have had donations, and Community Oven, I think, came in around $1,000, and so, not having a problem with any of the kids that either need assistance or even just a little bit of help. So, we're doing, doing really well in that realm. Our first dance is going to be this Friday. We have the sixth grade coming in from 3:45 to 5:45, and then the eighth grade is coming in at 6:30 to 8:30. And on this Friday, we're also sending the eighth grade down to the Christmas Carol. So, looking forward to a lot of different things. Also, this week started our, our play auditions, so look forward to a late winter, early spring play to, to come and watch. Ms. Clark does a wonderful job with them, and there were a lot of signups, so she's, she's got her work cut out for her. Any other questions?
You need refreshments for the dance?
We, we put something out to teachers and to some, some parents, if they wanted to bring some, you know, something in from home, they're welcome to donate. All proceeds go back to the school, so.
Questions? I may have just misheard. So, sixth graders are 3:45 to 5:45?
Yep.
Eighth graders are later. I think you said 6:45?
6:30 to 8:30.
When are the seventh graders going?
I'm sorry, seventh and eighth grade.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
That's kind of what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Any other, plus?
And I kind of hate to bring this up, but given the political climate that we're in, I think I need to. Have you had any issues or reports of antisemitism in the school?
Not off the top of my head. I'm gonna turn and look into Mr. Westfall real quick. Nope.
That's, that's good news.
That is very good news.
Any other questions or comments?
I just, could you elaborate a little bit on your bullet point on the demerit system, how it's working? You just mentioned basically in here that the introduction to the demerit system and overall behavior philosophy. So, it, how long has it been instituted? How has it been working out, and have there been any roadblocks regarding the program? And then can you also give us a little bit more on the My Voice survey? And is that gonna be a quarterly-ish program with parents, teachers, et cetera? Or is that just a once, once-a-year phenomena?
So, to start off with the demerit system, we introduced the demerit system at the beginning of the year, and had some feedback from parents, and had a meeting early, I believe sometime in October, November. Really listening to, one of the things that I'm doing is I'm getting to know the community a little bit better. Having parents come in and talk to me about how they felt about the, the system and the introduction of it, and really the impact on how it made students feel when it was introduced to them. You know, we deal a lot with anxiety, and I think that an introduction, introduction of something like that raised a lot of anxiety. Again, the, the intent was to really focus on probably about 2% of our population. Assisting, assisting kids with, coming up with either a type of behavior program or, you know, reviewing their incidents in Alma, very much like what the Swiss system does. When students are having behavioral issues, where they're having behavioral issues, assisting students with culling those behaviors and, and changing them so they can move on in a positive fashion and come here and do what they're supposed to be doing and, and learning and socializing and, you know, building themselves as a more positive community member. So, had one conversation with parents, and then the My Voice survey came out, and really gave more solid data about parents' perspective of the school and students' perspective of the school. And so, I talked to parents about some of those results, and from that, really honed in on some of the, the changes that we need to make, especially around students. And one of the things that, you know, was brought up here, I think at the end of last year, was really a student voice component. Making students, you know, a part of decisions that are made here, getting their perspective and seeing what changes need to be made from, you know, like Mary came up before, and she was talking about meeting with kids to talk to them, the student council, talk to them about the, the foods that are coming out of the kitchen and getting their input. That's, you know, that's a small piece of it, I think. But in January, we're gonna be bringing the full reports to you, I believe, and I was just talking to Mr. Sadler about, we meet as principals once a month, and that's gonna be on our agenda to, to talk about, looking at Marston School data, our data, comparing some of the, the outcomes of it, starting a conversation about if, if there's a higher percentage down there about how kids feel about the school, or how they feel about themselves while they're at school, et cetera. You know, just seeing if there's a, a difference in, in the two different schools, because they're the same kids. It's just a different environment. My plan with the My Voice surveys is to bring teachers in on the conversation, and then continue those meetings monthly with parents and teachers to continue a conversation about what we need to work on. It is, you know, it is, it is sort of a dipstick data point for all of those, but it's, it's what we have, and it's, it's really what we're gonna start out with, with those, those conversations. The conversations that I had, I think it was the 28th of November, with a great group of parents who took time out of their day to, to come in and talk to me, it was, it was a great conversation, and I look forward to continuing those conversations to help the school move forward, and, you know, if, if anybody's interested, I'll be sending out another email in my, or, you know, signup sheet in my, my newsletter in January. So, but just trying to move things forward.
Part two of the question.
I think Frank's got a part two, and then we'll go to you.
Okay. What was part two? I thought, I thought part two was the continuation of the meeting, so I thought I hit on that.
The voice, the voice survey, you're gonna have it annually? You're gonna have it quarterly?
I, I believe that it's every two years is what's recommended.
Actually, if you remember, the last time we did it, I think it was 2000...
16?
Yeah, 2016, 17. It's, it's usually done every, you know, three to five years. It's kind of a dipstick to see where, where it's going. In fact, in my time here, we've given it maybe a total of four times. So, I, I think, you know, we felt that coming out of COVID, it was important to, as we think about setting goals, we thought it was important to look at this, knowing its baseline, but really taking a couple of years to look at it and then to give it again. I know that, you know, you, you can look at it, although from previous years, but different circumstances and different world even in 2017, 18, right? So, I think that for the most part, this is baseline, but you could give it like every three or four years. It's just up to us as a district, whatever we think we want to do.
Yes.
I know you, you indicated that you might want to make a presentation to us in January. A suggestion I might have is, is we wait until February to give you guys a little bit more time, because you got the holidays coming up and so on and so forth, and that would just be my suggestion.
Completely up to you. I think we talked about it at our leadership team meeting, but it's, it's, it's your purview and what you'd like to do. We, we have been kind of poring through the results since, we gave it in October, and we've been kind of been poring through the results in November, December. But I think that if we wait and we do it in February, by then, they could tell you what, what some of their next steps and goals are, what they, yeah, so it's, however you'd like.
That would be my suggestion.
I will throw out that we did have a parent who came in who offered some opinions about the demerit system, and I think we did tell her that that, their report to us was going to be coming pretty soon, so just to throw that out there about whether we want to push it out or not.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be ready either month.
There you go.
I've been, I've been...
Whatever it is, it is.
So, do we have any, do you want to leave it as a motion, or do you want to leave it up to Mr. Hawkins and Dr. Costa?
I'll leave it to them.
Okay.
Let's do it.
I think parents are anxious to hear just high points, low points, and next steps.
And tell Mrs. Betts when it's gonna happen.
Yep.
Yeah, she's the one that came in and talked to us.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Lois De Silva Napkin, one of the busiest people in Hampton, I think, right now. It's an ever-growing population loss.
That it is. Good evening. Good to be here. You do have my report, and I did include the NASDAQ report, so that's just for your review. I did put a few little numbers in my report. We are trying to hold steady with our expenditures. As our numbers go up, if you look at our move-ins, we've had 11 move-ins with, with students with IEPs this year, and that's a large number of students with some really challenging needs, and we are continuing to do the very best for these kids. I also wanted to mention, just to, to talk about the staff, the Hampton Academy staff, that's a full staff reading professional development that's going on that Dr. Costa referred to. It's a 10 hours of face-to-face instructional time for our staff members, and we're teaching them about implementing language-based instructional skills, so that they can be more varied in their teaching and their ability to teach kids in different ways in all the classes. So, that's been a really exciting adventure, and we're halfway through right now, and it also includes two days of a job-embedded professional development coaching, side-by-side with some of the team members. So, the Hampton Academy's really embraced that PD. Also, we do work with Northeast Passage on a weekly basis. I just wanted to let the board know that we do fund them. They come, they work with our ELP program. Every Monday, we have students that have a recreation therapy as a service in their IEP. It really is quite a gift to be able to have them here, and the students that experience their services every week really get some great community-building skills. They work on their pragmatic language skills, social communication. They do go off-campus, or sometimes they stay on-campus, so we do work with Northeast Passage on a weekly basis. And that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Okay, the first one is a comment, and I just wanted to make sure that the public kind of heard this. You have here that the average cost per IEP remains at $25,529. So, that is the average cost for a child who is on an IEP.
That's how the...
And we work very hard to keep those students in districts, so that cost doesn't get too high, right?
Right.
But we do have to continue to provide a free and appropriate public education for all.
All students. That's exactly right.
My other question, I have, do have a question, though. We have six students at Sacred Heart. Could you explain how those six students are, how their needs are met?
Sure.
Legally, as we have to.
Yep. So, any student who attends Sacred Heart, and they are identified with a special education disability, will be serviced by Hampton Public Schools. That's the same for all over the state, so no matter where they come from, if they have special ed disability and they're in our town, they go to that school, we support them. The way that works is I am obligated to meet with Megan Kokler, the director of the Sacred Heart system. We meet over the summer. We have to fill out a form to look at all the kids that are identified, and we decide how to spend, we get federal funding, so a percentage of our IDEA grant, we have to obligate to Sacred Heart by law, and it is by a per pupil number, so we look at the exact numbers in, on July 1. We say how many kids are identified. Right now, there are six. We divide up the money, and each child gets a certain amount of money. We do decide what service to provide, and most often, we choose to provide speech and language, because that's one of the most difficult services for a private school to provide. Private schools are not obligated to provide any special education. They don't have special ed services there. They don't have special ed certified staff. So, if a parent chooses to send a child who is identified special ed to a private school, they need to understand that child's not going to get the same kind of services that they would get in a public school. But we can give them some small slice of servicing, and most often, it's speech and language. We have on occasion provided some occupational therapy, because that's another very hard service, and we often consult. We are also obligated, and we cannot use grant money to do this, to identify and do child find, to provide the testing for any child who is referred to special ed from Sacred Heart. We, as a Hampton School District, have to go to the school, have the, the meeting with the parents, do all of the testing, reconvene, talk about... meeting with the parents, do all of the testing, reconvene, talk about eligibility. And then in the end, if they are identifiable, we simply say, yes, your child is eligible for special ed, but it ends there. We don't, there are no IEPs at Sacred Heart. They, we do have service plans. Those students all have a service plan. It's a very short document and it simply explains the amount of hours of services that that child will get per year. For instance, most children get 17 to 19 hours per year of speech services. That's what most of the service plans read. Thank you.
What, how much has the special ed department had to spend on unexpected or moved it, moved in, we didn't know this year so far?
Well, that is a very challenging question to answer right off the bat. Some students come to us and they're already placed, when they move in it, they're already placed in an out-of-district placement? If they are, we continue to place them at that school and then we pick up the tuition and transportation. Out-of-district costs range anywhere from 125 to 175 for the tuition and another 80 to 150 for transportation per child. So if we have a move-in and they're already placed out of district, we are obligated to start paying those expenses.
And where does that money come from?
Well, that's a great question. If the budget doesn't afford it, if we cannot find a way to make it work because it wasn't budgeted. I, if this child moved in, we made the budget last year. So there's no way that we're going to be able to eat that up or, or fund it. Yes?
Just to clarify, when you said 80 to 125, you, you, you meant 80,000 to 125,000.
Her child.
I think it was 150,000, 80 to 150,000 on transportation. Some of our, we have, you'd be surprised how far we're commuting some students. It's really.
So the question, let me answer, so your question, the question is how do we fund it? Sometimes during the school year, we might have a child move out. So then we get lucky, then it balances out. Sometimes when we made the budget last year, we have a move-out over the summer. So then we have a move-in in December, it balances out. So Mariah and I work very closely all year long. We are constantly looking at the bottom line of special ed. So far, we've been able to balance everything out. It has been challenging. There's also other, if there's other funding at the end of the year that hasn't already been used, like software supplies. If a staff member came in at a little bit less than the other staff member. So Mariah will look at the entire budget at the end of the year and just see, is there any other way that we can make up that, that funding? If we can't, the next step is to have the superintendent needs to come to the board and usually that would happen in March or April and say, we have exhausted all of our funding and we cannot fund the special ed that we need to fund this year and we need to go to the trust fund. And we have to go to the town and ask for money.
Okay, and then the town has to vote on it?
And it's, yep.
You have to vote on it.
The board votes on it and then the town votes on it and hopefully, and again, where does that money come from? It, it's, it's very, very challenging and the money comes from, hopefully we are budgeting well and we're trying to anticipate, but you can't always anticipate these kinds of expenses. You do have a trust fund in, in Hampton. We would look to use that money first and that's at warrant article time, sometimes the town adds money to it and that's a good thing to have. There's also, and there are new unfunded 5%. Yeah, your contingency.
All special ed is federally mandated, correct?
It is federally, yes, absolutely. Yes, IDEA.
What effect does it have on the money that's spent on the rest of the population when we have to go over into special ed into the regular budget?
It affects our supplies, it would affect our, some of the services that we can't utilize in that year.
It's, yeah. It definitely, it certainly can affect the regular education environment. We certainly try not to, but it could. There's no, it could. We are obligated by federal law, no matter who it is, if they move into Hampton and then they live here, no matter what level of disability they have, we have to educate them. So that's why we have some students, as you see on the chart, where are we right now? Out of District 8. Eight kids are out of district right now. That means they don't come to this public school. We transport them somewhere else farther away and it's a big cost.
Now, Lois, if somebody's on a McKinney, McKinley Vento program and they move to another district, do we have to still cover their costs?
So we don't have to cover special education if a McKinney Vento child moves to a different town. What we do need to do is work with that town and we may need to split the cost of transportation. If the child and the family and the team decides that the child is better served in Hampton and they move to Salisbury, we may need to pay a transport company to pick up the child in Salisbury, bring him to Hampton for school and bring him back to Salisbury. And we would split that cost with Salisbury for the year. That's only if they were McKinney Vento and then they're down there and they're still McKinney Vento. We would need to do that, but no special education costs are shared in the McKinney Vento realm.
Okay, thank you.
And the state does not provide any funding or for special ed?
For McKinney Vento or? Oh, yes, yeah, well, it's a reimbursement program and it's called Catastrophic Aid, CATAid. We do get checks every year, but it's for the year before. So it's not a very good system, which, so we have to put out, let's just, $800,000-ish, let's just, a number. You put out all that money and then my, Kim Bryant and Mariah do lots and lots of paperwork and money and we show the state how much we spent. There is a formula, a funding formula. It's if you spend three and a half percent over the per pupil cost, so this, all these numbers come from the state. You do the simple math. When you spend over that amount, whatever you spent over that amount, the state's going to give you a certain percentage back after you paid over that amount. Usually it's supposed to be 100%, most times it's 70 or 80 or 85% of the overage, which may, the numbers are right around 67,000 is kind of the cap. After we spend that on a child, we submit paperwork and we say, please give us this money next year because we spent it already. And then they give us a check and then Mariah has to figure, every year she's got to figure out how much do we think we're going to get back and that's the revenue number she puts in.
So you see that in my revenues and that my MS 22, 20, 22R. And then at the end of the year, when I give you my fund, well, we haven't had a fund balance, but when, the fund balance that I do give you is revenues and that's one of the numbers is the CATAid and Medicaid that we, we, like I said, Kim works really hard to get back and it's a lot of paperwork. But we do it because it's a lot of, it's, I mean, we spend a lot, so it's worth.
It's worth it. We did, we did bring in a, can, we brought in over $100,000 in Medicaid reimbursement and I wanted, that is a huge, $111,000 Medicaid reimbursement is a great thing. It's a reimbursement though, don't forget, we already put it out, comes back in. But that's more than we brought in in quite a long time in Hampton. And that's a, that's a testament to all the people who are doing all the paperwork that goes along with that. That's all the case managers, the related service people, Kim Bryant, Christine Sullivan, Mariah. But that is a source of revenue for the district. And it doesn't go back to special ed, it goes back right into the general fund.
Yep.
For all the reasons we've talked about is why this board voted to put in $100,000 in addition to the presented budget was for special ed for these very reasons that we've talked about.
So, so the, we just, I guess, I think I just want to jump on what you said, Jenny.
Yeah.
We know a lot of this information, but we need to educate the public. And that's why this questioning is very important. You need to understand why the budget is what it is and all the factors that go into it.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I would be happy to sit down, honestly have a conversation with anybody who wants to understand the special education tuitions and transportations and, and how it all works because it, it is quite a large sum of money and it, it can be overwhelming at times when you don't know what you don't know and the unknowns come. Like I said, we've been very fortunate to be able to balance them out. I'm not sure this year is going to be that way. I, I think we're running into some real challenges. I just have to keep, every month I'm just going to keep saying that. And Mariah and I and Dr. Costa will keep you posted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Levine?
So we've been very busy. Nick's been doing a great job with recording all the videos of all the different wonderful events that we've got going on. This week, he's videoing all the concerts and plays and all of those wonderful things. So those will be up on our YouTube channel shortly. We also, Nick has also started working with the classroom teachers here at Hampton Academy on podcasting. So there's something now that's being done in the classrooms with students. And we've got two seventh grade teachers that are doing it right now and we're starting to branch that out. We've got kids coming after school and working on their own podcasts. So we're really excited about that. Report cards went out this week, so if parents did not get them, they should have gotten an email, so they need to contact their school, make sure their information is updated. The other thing is the weather, it's starting, you know, it doesn't look like it, but the snow will be here before we know it. And so we send out alerts through several different forms of communication. We send out a phone call, an email. We blast it on social media, on our, on our Facebook, on our website. Please make sure, parents, that your contact information is correct with your schools. If you haven't received communication from one of the three schools, please contact them so we can make sure we have your updated information. We've also done all of our security cameras and updates with mapping. SROs have really liked this. It's going to help out if we ever have an emergency situation in any of our buildings. And that's about it. Any questions?
I, I do. Do you just want to give them a little update on our conversation on Monday regarding what's going on in the state? I don't know if people are following this, but there has been, there have been a number of districts that have fallen to unfortunately ransom attacks, ransomware attacks and malware attacks. And so it was brought up at our state meeting last Friday in terms of making sure that we're doing everything we can. And I know that we're, we don't need to say too much, but I know we had a pretty in-depth conversation, so.
Yeah. Luckily, Dave Hansberry, who's our district administrator, is a techie guru. He's on top of everything. He is fabulous. We had anticipated some changes coming out, so we already did some recommendations that the state is now recommending school districts do and we put those in place over the summer. We're in a good place, we're going to do some internal audits just to make sure. One thing that we're really trying to stress is this dual authentication. We know it was kind of a pain for everybody at the beginning of the year, but that is the recommendation that everybody's going with. So there's two ways. You have to log in and you have to get a password, you can't share that password. So we're doing those things, we're, we're checking all of our network connections. We're trying to make sure, you know, people aren't bringing in viruses. We've got networks, we've got, we've got tons of things in place, but we are going to take a, a look at, you know, our internal systems and make sure that we do have everything kind of buttoned up. And we'll be doing a more formal in-depth report for you guys coming out in January of all the steps we're doing and anticipate doing this year.
I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm really glad to see that you've started that discussion on AI in the classrooms here at Hampton Academy. Obviously, that's going to be vital.
It is.
More so here at Hampton Academy than the other schools.
Yeah, and we're trying to tackle to, we're kind of branch off of what the high school is doing because we know it's a really big impact up there. So we're starting to have those conversations with the ELA teachers and figuring out what they're doing at the high school to help support our students to moving forward as they head up to Wantaconet. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Bill Assad with Building.
That's okay. I think we said there's a car outside with its lights on, it's a green Nissan. Yep, so if anybody in here, thanks.
Good evening. So I really want to say a couple of different things and this may be off of facilities, but you know, our students are the best part of our school and we're really lucky to be supported with the staff and the services that we provide. I think a lot of times we need to reflect upon that and remember that we have a good product here and our students really do well.
Start, start from the beginning.
Hi, everyone. So, I also want to thank Mary for the, the vegan treats. They were quite tasty. I don't know if I was hungry, but I did eat them and I enjoyed them. So thank you, Mary, and your food service staff. I also want to make time to take a special thanks to custodial staff for all their continued effort in this time of labor shortages and the sacrifices that they make with their family and friends to put in time to make sure our buildings are clean, safe and healthy. And I truly appreciate it and I think everybody does, but they're the unsung heroes, so I want to make sure that everybody at home and our custodians know that they are well-respected and we appreciate everything they're doing. With that, I will say, it's still not too early to apply for summer hires or for our two full-time positions that are still open. So I just want to remind everybody, winter is here. Thank you, Amber, for the reminder of how people will know if they're school or no school whether, with the weather changes and to remind everybody to wear sensible shoes so that you can travel safely on our properties. We're developing RFPs for the ventilation system at Center School. We continue to work on an RFP for the preschool playground. We're working with the SAU 90 security grants, the RFP for the boiler replacement at Marston School, continued discovery about how large of a asbestos problem that we may have in the undiscovered materials weigh in the ceilings at Center School. So that's basically the few things we have going on in facilities and I would welcome any questions or anything I could help with.
Quick question. From time to time or on a yearly basis, do representatives from Primex come in and do an assessment with you of any things that could be hazardous? Trip hazards, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, slip, trip and falls are very important.
Stop, drop and roll.
Yeah. We talk about that constantly at our safety committee meetings. Ladder safety is very important. No standing on chairs when you're reaching over to put things up. Primex is mostly a online service. They have been out and we've called them out to look at playgrounds. Primex does offer us a lot of different services when we reach out. But do they come out on a regular basis? Not unless it's solicited, but they do have the self, they, they generate reports so we can do self-evaluations of the playgrounds and, and reminders of snow loads on the roofs to make sure that our roof drains are clean so that if we get snow and then rain, that they can drain properly. We don't have to worry about weight on the roofs. Things like that are, are very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good, great input.
Keith, how is the lack of, you're missing two custodians. How are you getting that work done?
We have a staff that is continuing to step up to the plate. And I would like to also thank the instructional staff because they have been very good at policing their areas and helping out and that's been a great help. They always have, but it just seems like it's just a little bit, a little bit stepped up because there are a lot more awareness of it. So I think that's a good thing. We have a couple of part-timers that are helping. We had one young lady that just applied to work part-time. A local young lady in town and she'll be working over at the Marston to help us out over there.
So are you looking for, if somebody doesn't want to work full-time, are you still looking for part-time?
I am. I am open to entertain people that want to work as a custodian in our buildings. And we would work with them. I would like to have them work a little bit more than one day a week, but a few days a week or something, that would be fantastic. Right now, a lot of the extra stuff is done on Saturday when we have basketball in. So they can pick it up. It's very difficult to do the few extra things, hanging things up or moving things around or that type of thing. But they've had great support for setups. Right now, it's a very busy time of year with the concerts and moving around the, the different things and equipment that they need from between buildings and back and forth. I mean, I, we're very blessed with a great custodial staff. That's all I can say. I probably just jinxed it by saying that right now, but we are really lucky.
Any other questions?
You just recently, it was my understanding you had one opening. Now you have two. Is that correct?
No, we've had two for quite a while now.
You had two for quite a while.
We had gone up to three, but we got one on a replacement.
What seems to be the problem or, I guess, the impasse of trying to find help? Is it, is it the wage that we offer? Or is it the time involved, whether it's night versus day work, to your best knowledge?
Well, I think there's, who we got? Twenty people in the room. We probably have twenty different answers to that question. I think the toughest thing for a blue collar position, like a custodian, hard, honest work. The most difficult thing is finding affordable housing, even at the fair wage that we pay. So, you know, if you're coming in from, let's say you're inland, a few exits, get away from the seacoast, then you add the cost of gas and owning a car and traveling. What we get paid per hour doesn't really help offset that. Most of our staff live in our community, Hampton Falls, Seabrook, North Hampton, Hampton. I really wish I had an answer for that. And so would it North Hampton, Winnicott, Exeter, Seabrook, Newburyport, Portsmouth, Dover. It's, I've never seen anything quite like this, to be perfectly honest with you. I'm a dinosaur, and I have not seen this labor situation like it is today. I just have not seen it. We treat our staff well. We provide with good tools so they can do their jobs. As I always tell the administration here is if we can't pay them, let's get them great tools so they can be efficient and they don't have to have anything they need to worry about, as best we can, as best we can. We have tried out some robotics. Robotics aren't quite there yet for the size buildings we have. We have a few Roombas that we're trying in small office areas. It's, it's not there yet. It's not there. And we have an aging custodial population, as you, as you all know, which is going to be another challenge in the next couple of years, too. We have a couple of folks that are in their seventies, early seventies, and probably about four of them that are in their sixties. I'm not trying to give away their ages, crew. You're young at heart, and that's what I love. But these are the challenges that we face right now. And I really wish I had an answer for that. I mean, I mean, it steps up to the same thing with substitutes and, you know, all the different challenges. I really wish we had an answer for that. Thank you.
What's the starting annual salary for a position?
What would you say, Mariah, we're up to 20, what, an hour?
Oh, I want to say 23 an hour.
Which includes health and dental and
That's an hourly salary. What is it annually?
Forty-six thousand, if it's, if it's full-time. And then, I mean, I think New Hampshire retirement, you get New Hampshire retirement, good health benefits, vacation time.
Paid holidays.
Paid holidays.
And what a great place to work.
And overtime.
Over time.
Yeah, option for overtime.
Yeah. Sometimes overtime's mandatory on snow days. Thank you very much. If anybody knows of any, we're very welcoming here at the Hampton School District. Thank you very much.
Forty-six thousand.
Just a couple of things. Ms. Lassard and I are starting to get involved with the Hampton Hub Refinement Committee as they're looking at that project. We had the opportunity to meet with them on December 19th in our, I'm sorry, we met with them on November 30th, and our next meeting is going to be December 19th. So it's exciting to be part of those conversations with Hampton Rec and Renee over there. So it's pretty exciting. Just to remind people that obviously our social worker, Emily Fixler, is very busy right now with our lend-a-hand food drive and our giving trees at the schools. So we're wanting to ensure that everyone has a great holiday. Just trying to, don't want to be redundant. I think I just want to make a note that last Friday, I'm sorry, last Saturday was Polly Nishadoan's last day at the library, Lane Library. She'd been there 17 years and had the pleasure and joy of working with her and such a great partner in our community. And she is off to Prague where I'm so excited for her and I wish, we just wish her all the best. But she's just a gem and had the opportunity on Saturday to go over and visit her before the dance party and just send our well wishes on behalf of our SAU. Moving on, Sue Antico is, continues to work very part-time in our district as an outside consultant. She was in our district today and she had the opportunity to meet with Marsden leadership as well as Hampton Academy leadership and is looking at anything that's related to responsive classroom, OVAUS, classroom management, social emotional learning. So she continues to be a resource for our district and she's just terrific. And moving along, construction at the SAU is coming along just to piggyback off Mr. Lassard. It's very exciting that today we were in there in one of the spaces and looking at colors for the walls and making sure that we're going to have a great conference space. So that's exciting to see that. I know that they have big plans over the holiday break to make some nice headway on that. So we're excited about that. And then, of course, Dr. DeSylvan Apton and I continue to meet with the mental health team. We're going to meet with them again tomorrow and just to talk about pertinent issues in a vertical way, pre-K to grade eight. As Mrs. Shepherd updated us regarding what's going on with curriculum, you know that I had mentioned that both Marsden School and Hampton Academy were recognized by U.S. News and World Report for their ranking statewide. Just a tribute to the work that's done every day in our schools by, by the great staff that we have that really puts them in the top in the state. I know that it's exciting to see that the Marsden was number 21. And there are quite a few elementary schools in our state, and Hampton Academy was number 19. There are fewer middle schools, but still an outstanding recognition by, by our schools. And that's really based on their state assessments, but also on how well our students do at high school and beyond. So it really is looking at that data, which is pretty exciting. And although there's always room for improvement, it just is some affirmation that I think we're moving in the right direction and that we are rebounding from COVID instructional losses. So it's really exciting to see that. Obviously, our language arts work continues. It's really important to us as we know that reading and writing, speaking and listening is critical to our students' success. And vertical teams will meet on January 18th as a district to continue those conversations. Our math will meet vertically December 21st. We look forward to that. And then, of course, looking at our response to instructional practices, Dr. DeSylvan Apton and I are meeting with those teams, again vertically, to ensure that we have some consistency in practice in common forms for all three schools. You know, some of the headway that we have made is looking at, you know, all three schools will have universal screenings. They'll use annual summary sheets, folders for tracking students, pre-K to grade eight, and common calendar dates, which makes for more seamless transition. It also allows us to monitor students in a more holistic way so that every time a student transitions from one school to another, we have that information. So we're pretty excited about that work. You know, obviously, there continues to be work, but common processes do include an in-depth review of the student's progress, which includes a data dive and progress monitoring. And then finally, our next steps include reviewing systems of intervention and extension. So just good practices that really ensure those seamless transitions for our students. You know, it's, it's just an exciting time to be in the schools. I've had the pleasure of attending Hampton Academy concert Monday night. I had the pleasure of attending Center School concert last week. I'm looking forward to the choral concert on Wednesday. And then, of course, Monday, next Monday will be the Marsden School. I continue to have some great walkthroughs through the schools today. I was at Marsden School, and the instruction is, is just top-notch. The children are happy. They're engaged in meaningful learning experiences. I think my Facebook posts really convey how kids are feeling about learning and what is, what is happening. And I hope it gives people in our community a window into what's happening in terms of the schools and, and just the meaningful learning experiences that our children get every day. So I guess at this time of the year, it's just an opportunity to, to say thank you to the board for their support, the community for their support. We're wishing everyone a wonderful holiday season ahead, health filled with good health and happiness. And we do look forward to 2024 and the start of this new year and, and hopefully just great joy for everyone with time, with family and friends during that winter break that'll come very shortly. Questions or comments for my report?
One question.
Okay.
Not regarding your report so much, but do we have any new retirees that may have presented? Nope. So we're safe?
I do not, but I do have a great, I had a great interview today for a substitute teacher, and I am so thrilled that this is a former student of ours that is currently at the University of New Hampshire, who is pursuing a degree in physical education and health. And there's nothing greater when I see my former students come back and want to volunteer or actually be substitutes in our building and give back to this profession. And it's just, that's just full circle. When you see them as students, when you're the principal, and then they come back and they're, they're going to work for you. So love when that happens. So just keep in mind, we do have, if people are interested in subbing, we're happy to bring you on board. Or if you'd like to be flexible with your time and help Mr. Lassard, he is too. So, but no, we do not have any other updates on that.
Thank you.
Want to the memorial plaque for the science teacher?
So, so I, this was brought to my attention, and I will give, obviously, Andrea an opportunity. And I don't know if it needs to be a plaque or something else, but I know that Nancy has some money that we would, she'd like us to spend.
So I spoke with the principal here at Hampton Academy, and I think he's come up with a, an even better idea because Mr. Wheeler probably, a plaque would be nice. But I think Bud, knowing Bud for all the years that I did, we came up with the idea of a weather station. Very similar to like they have at Ryd.
Yep.
And we can be part of the system. And I think that would be, that would be an excellent idea. So I believe that Ken and I both agreed that if we want to pursue that, that's what that money should be used for. And I think Bud would be really pleased.
I love that idea. And anything I can do to help support you move that along, I just promised Mrs. York that I would
Yep.
follow up. So thank you. That's a great idea.
No problem.
Love it.
So do you need a vote on that, Andrea, or?
Well, just to be
Just to be formal.
Have we voted to accept the money from Bud?
Yes.
We've already done that.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we use the money that was put forward as a, in memoriam. Did I say that right?
You did.
For Mr. Bud Wheeler, longtime science teacher and assistant principal, that we use that for a weather station.
Second, is there a second? Frank? Okay, all those in favor. What a nice tribute.
Thank you very much.
Now we're going to talk about the draft calendar for 2024, 2025.
So, go ahead.
I had some questions, but I can wait if you wanted to talk.
Yeah. So unfortunately, I am waiting to hear from SAU 21. And we've had conversations both with Rhonda Evans as well as Superintendent Meredith Nadeau. Because of the new laws that any schools that go to the CECO School of Technology have to have common calendars, it is creating, you can imagine, very great challenges to get a calendar approved. So they're not ready to share their calendar because it is still in draft form. So with that said, what we've done is we can do one of two things. They seem to think that it might be possible in January. So that's a possibility. The only thing we could do is, so what we did is we took the calendar and we followed the state recommendations. And we, we can leave out, if you want, early release days and wait because we really want to have some of those align. But I can, we can leave it in draft and revisit it in January. But unfortunately, they're not ready. So that's why I didn't make changes.
And we want to be mindful that, oh, sorry.
Right. I, I don't mind waiting until January. Okay. Because if we, if we do something, you know, parents are going to think that this is final and they're going to start making plans and so on and so forth. I was, nobody's fault. But didn't we get some correspondence from a, a parent who was suggesting that we try to make early releases on Fridays?
We, we did in the night. And if we do follow SAU 21s, that also follows Exeter. That is when they have their release days so that we could have, the stars could align and that could happen.
On Fridays?
Yes.
Because everyone that we have in here is a Wednesday.
We just, we didn't move it because we didn't know what theirs looked like. That's all.
We'll just keep that in mind as we work through.
Yep. That, I think, is going to probably be a reality, based on what I'm hearing from Meredith and what I'm, Meredith Nadeau, Superintendent of SAU 21, but also Esther Asbell, Superintendent of Exeter Stratum as well. So I think there'll be a move that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And to be fair, because I get a lot of questions every year about the calendar. And a lot of our calendar, the ones that, the things that the parents are interested in are things that don't really move. Right? So we know that next year, the vacation is going to be the last full week of February. We know that the April vacation is going to be that kind of last partial week of April into, into May. So a lot of that is going to stay the same.
Yeah. And the state, and the state sets the calendar for us to which to work from. So they try to do that. And so we take that as is. There was one problem with their April week that we, we brought to their attention and they moved back. But otherwise, we're just waiting to get the information about the early release days. But you're right, Wendy.
So question. So is the problem that we have with SAU 21, okay, that they have run into a situation where they don't know about the vacation time correlating? Or is it early release correlation?
Early release correlation because they have to coordinate it with all sending schools to the CECO School of Technology. So we're talking multiple districts. And multiple SAUs. And multiple SAUs. So it really, it's complicated.
We're gonna, we're all set with holding off till January.
Right.
Do you have anything on the NASDAQ report or?
I think unlike the special ed report, that's going up, it's really very flat. And I think that's what you see with our enrollment from last month to this month. It's not revealing in any way. The other thing I would say is that their projections have not always been right. So I look at it with a grain of salt, and I just kind of monitor it based on, you know, where the numbers are. But you can see there, it's very flat. That's what it shows to me. Anybody want to weigh in on that?
So I do. Look, we're all Hampton taxpayers in here, and we don't want to see our taxes go up any more than anyone else does. But we're also elected school board members. That being said, the statistics on enrollment, they're only one small piece of a very intricate and complicated puzzle. It does not take into account the many facets that are involved in education, academically, emotionally, physically, musically, artistically, you know, technologically, safe and safety. Those, those things are pieces that statistics aren't going to address. And I just get really concerned when we talk about numbers because our students aren't numbers. Our students are our students. And as I said, we're taxpayers too. We get that. But our students and all the things that are entailed in educating them in a very changing environment and changing circumstances from day to day, week to week, month to month, those have to be a factor in decisions that we make, just as much as a statistic does.
I really appreciate that comment, Andrea. And if I could just expound on it just a little bit. And to your point, you know, as you see, like, the numbers have been wrong even since 2020. We, so that's one thing. But the other piece is that with the amount of needs that we have as a district, what we are, what we are doing is we are starting to develop programs that allow our students to stay in our district. So although the numbers are lower, the needs are greater. And I'll give you some examples, like, for example, the NECC program that services six kids. We have to provide early intervention to those students that would, that would be eligible under child fine. And if you do not have programs, and we wouldn't without the NECC, you would be paying for these out-of-district placements. So we have the NECC program. We also, at the middle school, we have an experiential learning program as well as an aspire program, which again allows us to keep our students in their neighborhood schools. It's a win-win. Next year, we're looking at programming at Marston School so that we can ensure that we can provide some students with some options. And what it allows us to do is we have some options when students are really struggling and are, we, by law, we have to provide the least restrictive environment. But when children are struggling to maintain in a classroom, if you don't have other options, you are forced to look at out-of-district placements. We've been able, through our programming, to keep kids through these unique programs in our schools. So I just want to say that. And it's, it's a tribute to our pupil service director, our principals, and our staff because it's not without its challenges. But we really believe when we can keep children in our district, when we can, can always, it is a win-win as long as their needs are being met and there is success.
Enrollment?
From last year to this year, same.
Same.
I mean, from last month to this month, it's the same.
Same.
Yep.
For Les to get back. We'll go, Mariah, why don't we do your report?
I'll start.
Yeah, 9:51, from last month to this month, it's the same, 9:51, Ginny.
Same, 9:51.
Yeah, same, 9:51. Yep, same as last month.
So you notice that pretty much everything is encumbered in my budget now. There's a few trickling things for special ed. I am working directly with Lois and Keith. We're paying attention to expenditures, issues that are coming up, where we're going to have to change, move. It's a constant right now, just paying attention to it and being mindful. And I think we have a really good team that is mindful, so it's been helpful. And then I did show you food service. Right now, food service is struggling, as Mary talked, and like, she proved she's really trying to come up with ideas, out-of-the-box thinking, and, and getting students involved in, into the meals now and getting that excitement of having hot lunch. But with that said, I also told Mary that I would talk about the balances that are at the schools right now. And $6,000 doesn't sound like a lot of money for balances, but that is a lot of money for students that are open. So my, my ask is if you are able to pay your bills, please pay your bills. If you are unable to pay your bills, please have a conversation with Mary and I and help us get the free and reduce filled out. It's not only important so that we can have the bills covered, but it also helps with Title I, with our Title I tutors, with that funding because that's how we fall for federal funds in some of our grants. So please reach out to us because if, if you are able to pay your bills and you're not, that does affect the fund balance because I, I have to cover that. And it would just be helpful if you're mindful and/or if you don't understand our school box or our system or any of the information, please reach out to us. So I felt the need to help Mary with that. Our federal grants review, we, I closed a bunch up last month, so you'll see some closed coming up. And we have just finished writing all the new grants, so you'll see some new grants and what we're utilizing the funds for. Esther funds will end this September, and we just cleaned that up and are going to be rewriting that, so you'll see that. That will be up and posted. Again, I want just to remind you that the Budget Committee postponed our presentation from last Tuesday to next Tuesday, the 19th, at 6:00, the Town Hall. I have on our website a, our budget summary, and I will put up the presentation and any other information. If you can't find that, feel free to reach out to me, and I can get you any information that you need. And before I read the RSA's, because I've been getting a lot of phone calls about the warrant article that we'll be going over next. And I think that I want to read why we have to put it on our warrant and the laws behind it because I think that a lot of people feel that it's the school's district warrant article, and it's not the school district's warrant article. It's a, it's a private petition, and by law, we have to put it on there. So I just wanted to read what and why. So the petition article for child benefit services is specifically permitted by RSA 189:49. It is a school article. As a petition article, it must be included in the warrant. Because the article contains appropriation, it is also requires a recommendation of the school board and the budget committee, which is RSA 32:5VA. These type of articles are very common in some towns. So long as the funds are appropriated, are used as the child benefit services listed in the statute, they may expend for those purposes. That's RSA 189:49. The school board of any school district may provide the following child benefit services for pupils in each public and non-public school in the district or in any other district in the state. So those services can be used for school physician, school nurse, school health service, school guidance and psych service, educational testing services, transportation, under provision RSA 189:9, textbooks and instructional materials, health and welfare services, driver education, educational television services, programs for the deaf, blind, emotionally disturbed, children with disabilities, audio, audiovisual aids, programs for improvement, physical education, and hot lunch program. In the event that a court rules invalid or one or more of the Bud services, the other services shall not be deemed void but shall continue in effect. RSA 32:5V, when any purpose of appropriation submitted by governing body or by petition appears in, in as the warrant article or a part of a special warrant article, the article shall contain a notion of whether or not the appropriation is recommended by the governing body. And if there is a budget committee, a notion of whether or not it is recommended by the budget committee. So even though it is not our article, it is petitioned, and they have enough signatures, by law, we have to put it on our warrant article and maintain it. And, and both parties, school board and budget committee, have to recommend or not recommend it.
The options. Any questions from Mariah on our report? There being none. It's not always easy to be a member of the school board. It's not always easy to have to make decisions. There are tough ones and there are easy ones. Unfortunately, there have been more tough ones than there have been easy ones. Right now, we have to discuss and move forward the article that was presented by 57 registered voters and verified by the town clerk of Hampton that says, "Shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate funds in the amount of $52,521 to provide child benefit services in accordance with RSA 189:49 for students who are residents of the Hampton School District and attend Sacred Heart School located in Hampton, New Hampshire?" It's by petition, and the majority of the vote is required. Do I have a motion on this article?
So moved.
So moved. Are you moving with recommending?
Moving to vote.
Moving to recommend. Is there a second? I will second that. All those in favor of the warrant article for Sacred Heart to be recommended by the school board, raise their hand.
I have to abstain.
I don't know, you can, Frank.
Well, it's, yeah.
I guess you can. You can. Okay.
I have to abstain because I'm a parishioner.
Okay, you're a parishioner. Okay.
We should do one at a time. We should, you did yes.
You did yes. I did yes. Abstain.
Wait a minute, you moved it. You moved it.
He can move it, but he.
He voted?
I'm not a parishioner.
Okay.
Okay. So we have, Les, what are you?
Let's start again. Let's do, yes, no, abstain.
Okay.
We're getting a little into the weeds there.
Yeah, we've got, the only two votes I don't have are yours and yours. So what would you like? So two ayes, two abstains, and?
I'm going to abstain. Zero, three. Two, zero, three.
Two, zero, three. So it goes forward, recommended, right?
It just goes, it just goes two, zero, three.
Yeah, you don't have.
Two, zero, three. You don't have to, it does.
No, it's not recommended.
It's not recommended because of abstentions.
Right.
Okay.
So it'll be, it's not recommended by the school board, two, zero, three.
No, it's not, not recommended because it's, they abstain.
You have a chance.
No, you have to say, "I don't know what you do in this case."
I don't know.
And we've never had that.
We'll find out.
Yeah, I'll find out before we find out.
Yes, we need to know what the wording is here.
Yeah.
I don't know if two, oh, three.
I don't know if two, oh, three negates.
I don't either, and that's where I am.
I would have someone check on that.
Yeah, I'll ask Gordon Graham. Yep.
Yeah.
We'll find out tomorrow for you.
Because I've never seen that happen. So if we had it happen at first, that's all right. Moving on. Policy reviews, staff ethics.
I would move this, GBEA. It's a second read?
Yeah, both are.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Policy JICK, it's a second read. All those?
I said it before, before we do. I just wanted to, I, I, we spent a lot of time on this. I don't have any issues with it.
Yes, we did.
At all. I just, I think it would be important to let people know that we have had a lot of discussion about our bullying policy. We spent a lot of time on it. We have, have overhauled it a little bit.
We're all of Sacred Heart.
Hold on a minute.
Sure, of course.
I don't, I don't know if we, by law, we need 30 minutes of public comment. We didn't have it. So I don't know if before they leave, they have public comment.
Do you want to say something?
I just want to give you that because we.
I think we will, at the, at the end of our meeting, we usually offer public comment. So if you want to stay till the end.
Yeah, do you want to stay for public comment?
If you plan to talk more, stay. If you're not, you can go. Okay.
So.
So anyway, I just.
Yes, Wendy, you are absolutely right.
I just think it's important for families to know that we spent a lot of time on this, and we have overhauled it a little bit, and some of it's little tiny changes, and some of it's more important, but.
Well, it'll go up on the website.
Yep, exactly. That's all.
So did anybody move it? I'll move it.
You moved it. Okay.
Second it.
All those in favor? Are you voting abstain?
Yes.
I think it's five, zero.
Okay. Incentive, gender, consideration, obligation.
You're muted.
You're muted.
I did mute it.
Thank you.
I would move the ones from November 14th, public and non-public.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Yep.
And we had a work session on November 15th. I would, I would move that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Oh, it's been moved and seconded for November 15th. All those in favor? Any correspondence? Okay. Public comment.
I'm a little confused because I was cut off in the middle of my remarks because I spoke for more than three minutes. Am I supposed to speak for a certain number of minutes?
Three minutes. You have three minutes.
Well, all I can say is that obviously, it's a tough decision. And it's made even more tough because people love this church, and they love the school. I myself contribute to the school. But this is a position of principle. And the principle here is not, do we love all the kids? We all love all the kids. The principle is how best to express that love. And I would say, well, we show it to them by hewing to the Constitution and by looking at a principle which was so important. Maybe I am a dinosaur. But when Kennedy ran, Catholics could not be elected president. He ran on separation of church and state. And now we kind of assume that, well, everybody believes in that. And yet here in Hampton, clearly, that's no longer true. And I think what we're doing, what we're asking you to do, is to reassert that truth, to come back and say, yeah, we love the church, but let the church support itself. Let the taxpayer support the public schools, and let that divide remain. And when I think that divide, I think of a woman going to mass in the morning, and her husband is still on the couch, and she waves goodbye because he's not going. Maybe they're an interfaith marriage. But they have their own space. They have their own separation. And that's important, and that I hope we can do here in the town of Hampton. Let both worlds exist. Don't contaminate them.
Now, the process with this, yes, Mr.?
I'd like to ask you a question, if you don't mind. I've lived in this town since 1994, okay, when I was transferred up here. I would assume you've lived.
1994, okay, when I was transferred up here. I would assume you've lived in this town longer or equal to?
Shorter.
Okay. So, since 1994, this warrant article has always been on the ballot. Why now do you have an issue with it when you didn't have an issue in 1994 up to, let's say, last year, 2022, when it became an issue then? I'm just curious because I'd like to know because we've always left it up to the taxpayers to make that decision, whether they wanted to approve it or not approve it. Yet, since last year, we've had major issues on this and I'd like to know what happened from 1994 when I was a resident to now?
Well, I was not here in 1994, but I do think it's a bit misleading to say we've always left it up to the taxpayers. If you really left it up to the taxpayers, if you said to the taxpayers, do your own research, you would not make a recommendation on this article. The fact that you make a recommendation that it's in big bold print at the bottom of the warrant article means that you are influencing the taxpayers. You're not letting them make up their own mind. The only thing I can say to, this has come up, of course, before several meetings, we've had this warrant article for 50 years. Why are you objecting to it now? And all I can say is, well, I wasn't here 50 years ago. The first time I saw it on a warrant article, I came out saying, what was that all about? And most of the people who came out with me said, well, I don't know. I just voted because the school board recommended it. I will say one thing. I wasn't here in 1994 because I grew up in the South. And in the South, when I was a kid, I went to one school on one bus and the kid across the street who happened to be black went to another school. And when I asked my parents about that, they said, that's always the way we've done it. That's just the way it's been done. So, I think there are times when you have to look at things and say, well, this is a practice we've done for a long time. We never really thought about it all that much. But now it's time to change.
I would urge you and all the voters out there to have courage of their own convictions, do their research. Don't go by who recommends or what, who doesn't recommend. Do your research and vote your consciences on, on all the warrant articles and the budget. That, that's what I would say to do.
I'm very glad to hear you say that. And I know that you have the interest of the students at heart and of the town at heart. But I have to ask you once again, you are saying, do your own research. But here's my recommendation. Why not just say, I abstain? It's up to you guys to think this through.
I don't abstain on anything, sir. I always feel that I was elected to make a stand on each and every article presented to the school board, board of selectmen or budget committee, all of which I have served on. And I've been a resident since 1973 and been in public service since 1991.
So, you are making a stand. You are trying to influence the voters.
I, I.
Madam Chair?
I think.
Yeah, yeah. I think, yeah.
It's public comment, not public debate.
Public comment typically isn't.
I think you're right.
Back and forth.
But it now goes to the voters.
I know. It's, it's okay. I think we're getting sort of, it's fine. I think we're getting a little off in the weeds.
Yeah.
That's all. Which, and we're going to have the opportunity to do this all again at the deliberative session.
Deliberative session.
Oh, we got the dates for that. So, we're gonna, we're gonna do it all again?
And I think you can, I, there's public comment at the budget committee the next Tuesday night.
I don't think there's comment.
There's no budget. There's no.
No, there's no public comment.
No, budget committee. Yeah.
There's presentation.
Yeah.
When is our deliberative session that we have in the auditorium, when this is going to come up? What date?
We have a public hearing too.
Public, yeah.
Yeah, we have a public hearing. It's in January, January.
Do you know the date?
Yep, I'll find it for you.
Let's see, Janu, let's see. January 11th, it looks like, is the, is the budget public comment. And then February 5th is deliberative session with my notes from last month. Yeah.
So, you're welcome. Everyone's welcome to come.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. We need a non-public session?
I have one quick item, but I'd like to do it in non-public.
Yes.
January 11th at 7:00.
Okay. All those in favor of a non-public session?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? No one's abstaining? Okay.